All right, good evening everybody. We're here for the final in-person meeting of the 2024-2025 school year. I will call the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Everyone please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll read our land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that we are meeting on the unceded ancestral homeland of indigenous people whose enduring presence we humbly recognize. We honor the Wampanoag people as the original source and the Herring Pond Wampanoag as a surviving tribe indigenous to these lands. In our commitment to lifelong learning, we acknowledge historical injustices to the native people of this land and vow to educate ourselves, our community, and our students on the first peoples and the hardships they endured. We offer this as a small but essential step towards building a culture of respect, truth, and accountability. Right, our first order of business today is an executive session. Do I have a motion for that?
I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the investigation of criminal misconduct.
All right, have a second.
Second.
All right. We'll call executive session starting-- oh, sorry, we need a vote. We'll do a roll call. Ms. Margiadellis?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Haywood?
Yes.
Mr. Morgan?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Vote is unanimous. We will now go into executive session starting at 6:31 PM.
And we'll head up to the conference room.
Good evening, everyone. We will reconvene into open session at 7:25 PM. Welcome, everybody. First up on our agenda is comments from community members. Before we start, I'll read a quick statement. So, public comment is not an opportunity for discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. It is an individual's opportunity to express an opinion or concern on issues within the school committee's authority and scope. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to present their material and must begin their comments by saying their name and address. Do you have one person wishing to speak tonight? Mr. Weber?
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Dale Weber. For the record, tonight representing Precinct Three, one of the eighteen precincts in the town meeting roll call. I'm here tonight just to share a quick story with you. Back on May 23rd, I had reason to be out front here in the parking lot to follow up on a concern that some constituents from Precinct Three shared with me, that obviously they didn't get the memo about the voting locations had changed for May 17th, and they showed up here to vote from Precinct Three. And they pointed to me to the sign that was out front that said, "Precinct Three, Vote Here." So, I was here on the 23rd following up with a meeting of the DPW Assistant Director to try to effectuate the removal of that sign. While I was here, I ran into one of the school groundsman who I also represent with another hat that I wear in town. I represent the non-certificated employees of the school district, the head custodians, the custodians, the skilled craftsmen, and the cafeteria workers. So, one of my members was heading out to the side parking lot right behind you over here. There's a tree that's on the front page of the documents that I passed around to you to look at. That is a tree. It's called a golden chain tree, sometimes referred to as a golden rain tree. It was planted in memoriam to a woman that worked in this building when it was the town hall back in 1997. Janice Etter passed away way too early, age of 58 years old, due to her medical condition. Well, this groundsman was working his way towards that tree with a chainsaw. And I saw that the previous night's rainstorms, we had five inches of rain a couple of weeks ago, and some heavy wind, and the tree was leaning. It was leaning towards the parking spaces. And the back of the root ball came up out of the ground a little bit. And he was charged with the orders to take the tree down. I went up to him and asked him, "Please don't do that." I gave him the reasons why. He informed me that he had orders to do so. I said, "Could you please call your boss? Tell him I'm out here. Tell him that I'm asking him to hold off." Long story short, they held off. They took a few limbs off the bottom of the tree, which I was appreciative of. But I'm here before you tonight to basically ask for permission to put some stakes in the ground, some heavy-duty stakes behind that tree with some wire and some protective coating for the tree so that the wire doesn't cut into the bark, and support it. Maybe put some loam around the ball of the tree to give it a fighting chance. And I think we can save it. I've done some of this work in the past. If you don't want me to do it with a couple of volunteers, you can let me know that you'll have somebody from your place do it. But that's my request. And I'll do whatever you decide is best for the school committee. But I want you to know that I volunteer to do that. In the packet, I just want to share with you the letters that I received. Because the answer that I got that day from staff was that there's no plaque on that tree, no plaque on the building. And my answer to that was, well, back in 1997, the occupants of this building figured that they would always be occupants of this building. And they didn't know that you guys were coming to take over operation of the building. And so, they figured there was no need for the plaque. They all knew what the tree represented. This is a letter from Claire Vaz. Many of you might know her husband, Lenny Vaz, one of the, almost a 50-year town meeting member. So, she gave me the letter to verify where this was from. I gave you copies of the 1997 Annual Town Report listing Janice Etter in memoriam, and the fact that on page 169, she was listed as passing away on June 23rd at the young age of 58. So, that's my comments. I know you don't get into dialogue with public comment, but I'm hoping that I may be able to hear something back from the school committee, or your superintendent, or your building and grounds maintenance staff, that you will take care of that, or invite me to take care of it for you, which I'm happy to do. But thank you for your time. If there's any questions, I can entertain them. But if not, I'll bear to do to you.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
All right. Thank you. Have a great meeting.
All right. Next up, our student representative updates. Tonight, we have Anna King from Plymouth North High School.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Last week, Plymouth North graduated over 300 students. On Saturday, our family members and guests were in attendance to support all of our graduates. We would like to wish all of our graduates success in their future endeavors. Our academic convocation night was held last Thursday, June 6th. Congratulations to our seniors who were honored at the academic convocation night. 114 seniors received excellence awards, scholarships, and/or service awards. Students at North received over $206,000 in scholarships. We are very thankful to those families and businesses that provide these amazing awards. The Salutatorian Award for the Class of 2025 was awarded to Chelsea Ohewa. And the Valid Victorian Award of the Class of 2025 was awarded to Evan Johnson. Congratulations to both of these students for attaining the highest GPA in their class. Plymouth North High School students in the Class of 2026 were honored on Tuesday, June 10th, in the annual book award ceremony. The book awards program honors students who have demonstrated academic and extracurricular progress and leadership in their school and community. Sixteen students were recognized, excuse me, by well-respected colleges and presented with a book, certificate, or medal to acknowledge their hard work and dedication. Lastly, we would like to wish all of our students and families a safe and happy summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Any questions for asking? All right. Well, if not, we thank you for a wonderful school year.
Thank you.
And I look forward to having you next year as a senior.
Thank you.
Congrats on the last day of school.
Thanks.
All right. Get back to the agenda here. All right. So, next up, we have, I want to recognize some students who have received National Council of Teachers of English Writing Achievement Awards.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. It's always nice when we can come to school committee and talk about recognition that our students have received. So, for many years, we've been having our students submit writing to the National Council of Teachers of English Writing Competition. And we did have two winners from North High School. And Mrs. Shelley, Teri is going to tell you a little bit more about the contest.
So, each year, we nominate two students to participate. And I'm excited that both of ours were awarded recognition. What they're asked to do is, there is a specific essay topic each year. And now, I can't even remember what the essay topic was. What was it again? No, you don't remember either?
It was a while ago. I know. It took a while ago. Sorry.
Don't be worried.
It was a while ago. Anyway, so they have to respond. And then, they're assessed compared to nearly 1,000 kids across the country. And so, they both were awarded recognition.
So, we want to just call them up, if that's okay with you? So, we have an award of excellent rating to Maya Salamoni. And superior to Leo Carlin.
Dr. White, do you want to get a photo with the amazing writers?
Sure. Mrs. Teri? Yeah, you can go up to him. No, that's okay. And I just want to thank all of our English teachers for all of the hard work that they do every day to help our students become great writers. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have another fun topic. We have an international field trip request for Milan, Italy for next January 17th to 24th.
So, we have Mrs. Van Detti, who has been doing an outstanding job with Mrs. Roon's absence this year for her sabbatical. This is a trip that you're all familiar with. An exchange. Sarah's here to talk about the details with this trip and also talk about some of the financial opportunities that we've already been made available to us.
So, we're lucky to be able to continue the partnership with Collegio San Carlo from Milan, Italy. And they've agreed to continue the exchange program. So, so far, we have anticipated dates of receiving the Italian students here in our district on October 25th to November 1st. And a little change on the time that we would
Up with a meeting of the DPW Assistant Director to try to effectuate the removal of that sign. While I was here, I ran into a, one of the school groundsman who I also represent with another hat that I wear in town. I represent the non-certificated employees of the school district, the head custodians, the custodians, the skilled craftsmen, and the cafeteria workers. So, one of my members was heading out to the side parking lot right behind you over here. There's a tree that's on the front page of the documents that I passed around to you to look at. That is a tree, it's called a golden chain tree, sometimes referred to as a golden rain tree. It was planted in memoriam to a woman that worked in this building when it was the town hall. Back in 1997, Janice Etter passed away way too early, age of 58 years old, due to her medical condition. Well, this groundsman was working his way towards that tree with a chainsaw. And I saw that the previous night's rainstorms, we had five inches of rain a couple of weeks ago, and some heavy wind, and the tree was leaning. It was leaning towards the parking spaces, and the back of the root ball came up out of the ground a little bit. And he was charged with the orders to take the tree down. I went up to him and asked him, please don't do that. I gave him the reasons why. He informed me that he had orders to do so. I said, could you please call your, your boss? Tell them I'm out here. Tell them that I'm asking them to hold off. Long story short, they held off. They took a few limbs off the bottom of the tree, which I was appreciative of. But I'm here before you tonight to basically ask for permission to put some stakes in the ground, some heavy-duty stakes, behind that tree with some wire and some protective coating for the tree, so that the wire doesn't cut into the bark, and support it, maybe put some loam around the ball of the tree to give it a fighting chance. And I think we can save it. I've done some of this work in the past. If you don't want me to do it with a couple of volunteers, you can let me know that you'll have somebody from your place do it. But that's my request. And I'll do whatever you decide is best for the school community, but I want you to know that I volunteer to do that. In the packet, I just want to share with you the letters that I received, because the answer that I got that day from staff was that there's no plaque on that tree, no plaque on the building. My answer to that was, well, back in 1997, the occupants of this building figured that they would always be occupants of this building, and they didn't know that you guys were coming to take over operation of the building. And so they figured there was no need for the plaque. They all knew what the tree represented. This is a letter from Claire Vaz. Many of you might know her husband, Lenny Vaz, one of the, almost a 50-year town meeting member. So, she gave me the letter to verify where this was from. I gave you copies of the 1997 Annual Town Report, listing Janice Etter in memoriam, and the fact that on page 169, she was listed as passing away on June 23rd at the young age of 58. So that's my comments. I know you don't get into dialogue with public comment, but I'm hoping that I may be able to hear something back from the school committee, or your superintendent, or your building and grounds maintenance staff, that you will take care of that, or invite me to take care of it for you, which I'm happy to do. But thank you for your time. If there's any questions, I can entertain them, but if not, I'll bid adieu to you.
Yep. Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
All right. Thank you. Have a great meeting.
All right. Next up, we have our student representative updates.
Tonight, we have Anna King from Plymouth North High School.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Last week, Plymouth North graduated over 300 students. On Saturday, our family members and guests were in attendance to support all of our graduates. We would like to wish all of our graduates success in their future endeavors. Our academic convocation night was held last Thursday, June 6th. Congratulations to our seniors who were honored at the academic convocation night. 114 seniors received excellence awards, scholarships, and/or service awards. Students at North received over $206,000 in scholarships. We are, we are very thankful to those families and businesses that provide these amazing awards. The Salutatorian Award for the Class of 2025 was awarded to Chelsea Ohewa, and the Valid Victorian Award of the Class of 2025 was awarded to Evan Johnson. Congratulations to both of these students for attaining the highest GPA in their class. The Plymouth North High School students in the Class of 2026 were honored on Tuesday, June 10th, in the annual book award ceremony. The book awards program honors students who have demonstrated academic and extracurricular progress and leadership in their school and community. 16 students were recognized, excuse me, by well-respected colleges and presented with a book, certificate, or medal to acknowledge their hard work and dedication. Lastly, we would like to wish all of our students and families a safe and happy summer. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Any questions for us, King? All right. Well, if not, we thank you for a wonderful school year.
Oh, thank you.
And I look forward to having you next, back next year as a senior.
Thank you.
Congrats on the last day of school.
Thanks.
All right. Get back to the agenda here. All right. So next up, we have, I want to recognize some students who have received National Council of Teachers of English Writing Achievement Awards.
Thank you for having us. It's always nice when we can come to school committee and talk about recognition that our students have received. So, for many years, we've been having our students submit writing to the National Council of Teachers of English Writing Competition. And we did have two winners from North High School. And Mrs. Shelley, Terry's going to tell you a little bit more about the contest.
So, each year, we nominate two students to participate, and I'm excited that both of ours were awarded recognition. What they're asked to do is, there is a specific essay topic each year, and now I can't even remember what the essay topic was.
What was it again?
No, you don't remember either. It was a while ago. I know, it took a while ago. Sorry. It was, it was a while ago. Anyway, so they have to respond, and then they're assessed compared, and compared to nearly 1,000 kids across the country. And so they both were awarded recognition.
So we want to just call them up, if that's okay with you? So we have an award of excellent rating to Maya Salamoni. And, and superior to Leo Carlin.
Dr. White, do you want to get a photo with our amazing writers?
Sure. This is Terry. You want to? Yeah, you can go up to. No, that's okay. And I just want to thank all of our English teachers for all of the hard work that they do every day to help our students become great writers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have another fun topic. We have an international field trip request for Milan, Italy, for next January 17th to 24th.
So we have Mrs. Van Detti, who has been doing an outstanding job with Mrs. Roon's absence this year for her sabbatical. This is a trip that you're all familiar with, an exchange. Sarah's here to talk about the details with this trip, and also talk about some of the financial opportunities that we've already been made available to us.
So, we're lucky to be able to continue the partnership with Collegio San Carlo from Milan, Italy, and they've agreed to continue the exchange program. So, so far, we have anticipated dates of receiving the Italian students here in our district on October 25th to November 1st. And a little change on the time that we would go to Italy, January 17th to January 24th, which is the Martin Luther King Jr. Week from school. There were problems with traveling during school vacations, including the Milan Olympics, which is a, it's a big deal. It's hard to send children during that week, during the week of February vacation. And the Lombardy region of Italy is having their state testing in April and just not welcoming students during that time. Would like to continue the tradition of this exchange, so we thought that that week, we had met with Dr. Campbell about kind of pivoting this year to that week. We have spent some time thinking about how we could make sure that all families are able to participate in this trip. So, in anticipation of school committee approval, we had to send out the application, so it's pending approval. But with that, we sent out a, a needs kind of survey for people to fill out if they felt like they needed financial assistance, and we had four families fill that out. We're lucky that we've already gotten a great donation to the program of $5,000, so we're able to cover at least two full, you know, costs for the program, or maybe partial costs for the program. And hopefully, we can get more community partners to continue to donate to our Global Studies Program, to allow more families to be able to participate. So, and that along with some fundraising, I'm talking with Mike Abel and Allison Riordan about some ideas for fundraising throughout the school year in order to raise money to lower the overall cost for the program for all families and help families in need to participate. So, that's about all I've got for the, about the program.
All right. Questions? No questions? Do we have a motion, then?
I'm going to make a motion, but I also want to say I appreciate the time and effort you put in to consider the financial aspect of it, because it's something that is really important to our families and to us as a committee. So, thank you for all the effort you put in.
Thank you very much.
And I make a motion that we approve the Milan field trip from January 17th to the 24th of 2026.
All right. Do we have a second on that motion? Mr. Samar Dadas, seconds. Let's go to the vote online. And the motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Next up, we've got representatives here from the Plymouth Special Education Parent Advisory Council to introduce their new officers. All right. Welcome, ladies.
Thank you.
Please, take it away.
Thank you. We'd like to thank the district and the school committee for inviting us here tonight and allowing us the opportunity to formally introduce the new board for the year ahead, as well as our vision for the year ahead. And so, my name is Holly Gay. I'll be serving as a co-chair.
April Burr, also a co-chair.
Janet Chu, secretary.
Stephanie Howie, treasurer.
Shandy Cardier, community development.
I'm Elise Lapera, and I am the district CPAC liaison.
For our vision for the year ahead, the Plymouth CPAC envisions a school community where every student requiring special education is supported, empowered, and included. We strive to foster meaningful collaboration among families, educators, and administrators to ensure equitable access to education and services. Through advocacy, education, and community engagement, we aim to promote a culture of respect, understanding, and high expectations for all learners. In the year ahead, we, we aim to actively grow our CPAC membership in collaboration with the district. We aim to assure that all parents know that they are important stakeholders, and their voice and input matters. We want them to know they have a platform to come and share their positive feedback, concerns, questions, suggestions, and needs for support. We will do so by holding our monthly district and public meetings, create spin-off groups and events, and be active throughout the district and community. In addition to being active across multiple social media platforms, we will soon publish an updated CPAC website, which will serve as a guide and a resource for parents to stay current and connected with the CPAC. In the year ahead, the CPAC will focus on the strengths of our special education programming. Serving children is at the heart of our mission, which will be best met with a strength-based approach, highlighting our children's accomplishments, and always focusing on building their confidence and self-esteem. As special education continues to evolve, we are excited to collaborate and fulfill our advisory role in the year ahead. We would also like to request that we return later in the year to provide a more formal, in-depth presentation, and we look forward to our monthly CPAC district leadership meetings with Dr. Rogers, Catherine Jackson, and Ashley Shaw.
Do you have any questions for the folks? Ms. Bryan?
I have more so just clarifying or recommendation. I think I picked up on your statement in regards to being able to have parents bring forward positive feedback, and I just think it's important that we continue to have dialogue where we're sharing all types of feedback, so that we can make sure that we're able to, you know, meet challenges as well, and look for opportunities within that challenge. So I just wanted to kind of like amplify that message, so that, you know, all families are seen and heard. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? And I would like, I will say that even though Ms. Jackson will replace me on the committee, I did leave myself on as an alternate, so I will join the meetings when I'm available or need a cover for Ms. Shaw or Ms. Jackson, because I do like being part of that group.
Great. Thank you.
But you're, you're in good hands with Ms. Jackson and Ms. Shaw, though. All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming and introducing yourselves. All right. All right. Next up, we have a transportation efficiency report from the Alliance Education Associates. So, Mr. Lobby?
This is Rich Labrie. Rich, we've been working with Rich probably good six, seven months or so. We, obviously, as we all have talked about, transportation is a huge expense in this district. So what we did is, we reached out to Rich to perform a study to see, basically, to look at all aspects of our transportation and see, to kind of give us a guide in regards to what might be a good recommendation going forward. So, Rich is here tonight to summarize the, the report. If you have any questions for him, please feel free to ask, but I'll turn it over to Rich.
Thank you. And thank you for having me this evening to at least give you the highlights of the transportation report. If you're ever having trouble sleeping, this is the report to read. They tend to put people to sleep. I would just call your attention to a couple of things. One is that Plymouth is a, is a growing community in terms of population, but has decreasing enrollment. That's not unlike a lot of suburban Boston communities, primarily because people are moving in without the school-aged children, and that is not uncommon. Plymouth is a relatively large school district. It comprises about 135 square miles. It's relatively densely populated, about 678 people per square mile. That's considered densely populated for transportation purposes, is what I'm saying. And as such, when you look at transportation efficiency, it's not just the number of students riding a bus. It's, a lot of factors go into determining efficiency, not least of which is the geographic size of the district and the location of your schools in comparison to distances between schools. You look at whether you're using manual routing or computerized routing systems. The person who actually does the routing really determines the configuration and number of buses that you're required. The number of scheduled riders, being those that are eligible for free transportation, and in some cases, the fee-for-service students added to that, versus actual riders. We refer to that as student loading in our, in our report. The time available between school starting times and ending times, we consider that to be called, that's called tier time. That's the amount of time that you have to actually provide transportation between your bell schedules. As I said, the distance and travel time between your schools, population densities, highway and road infrastructure and traffic patterns, especially at drive times in morning and afternoon, and not least of which is the community expectations for the quality of service. Oftentimes, the community expects a certain level of service. Most parents want to be able to see their children get on and off the bus from, from their window, so they like very convenient bus stops. And lastly, it's typically the morning routes that drive the number of buses that you require because of after-school activities. Typically, your morning ridership is, is higher than your afternoon ridership. In our case, one of the things we looked at, again, is your, your bell schedules, and one of the things we noticed is that you have relatively short bell schedule in the morning between some of your schools, and a relatively short afternoon bell schedule in most of your schools. The result of that is that you're running a relatively low ratio of the number of seats on the bus that you're actually using. And when I say that, you're using about 40% of the seats that are capable. Typically, that would be problematic for us. The problem with the saying that it is not efficient is that you're using 90% of the tier time that you have available. So what that means is that if you had more time, you could pick up more students. And so, when we look at all the factors that lead to school efficiency, we're able to say that the system is as efficient as it can be, given the, the parameters that you, that you have to work with, and that especially being your school bell schedule. And our caveat is that you never change bell schedules for the sake of transportation. Transportation is a support service to the educational process, and you set bell schedules school year, length of the school day. You do those things for educational purposes, and transportation as a support service will provide the support as they're able to do that, to do so. We look at other factors. We, we look at some of the benchmarks. And when we look at the, the cost of transportation, we, we were very surprised when we looked at the last several years, and the last years on your current contract. You had a long-term contract to which transcended the COVID years. You have several years left on that contract at a 2.75% annual increase, unheard of today in the private sector. And while that's good today, the caveat to that statement is that if and when you go out to bid next time, you're going to see, you're going to see some sticker shock and a, and a big adjustment in, in the, the next round of bid. We look at the transportation costs compared to the total district budget, and in your case, it's averaged about 9.33% annually. And for suburban Boston and Cape-type of communities, the, the standard has been 10% or less is considered to be cost-effective. So we can say that based on the factors that we analyzed, we can say, not only are you as efficient as possible, you're also cost-effective. And that's a benchmark that DESI, Department of Education, uses, as well as a, an industry standard benchmark. I brought your attention to the fact that there's a severe driver shortage. There has been a driver shortage for the last several years. It continues. CDL drivers in particular, and there were several companies that are actually targeting school bus drivers for employment, offering them not only sign-on bonuses, but full-time employment, guaranteed overtime during the holiday periods, and a full benefit package. And it's difficult for the public sector to sometimes compete against the private sector for when there's a shortage, because they have the capability of, of, of offering types of bonuses to both recruit and retain good drivers. We looked at transportation operations. You run a hybrid three-tier system, which is very common, and is probably one of the more efficient ways of, of operating. You'll see, we have a lot of data with regard to the construction of your routes, the times of your routes, and the, the metrics for your routes. And as I said, in the morning, you're using 87% of your tier time that's available for a 40.1% load capacity. Your average route time, including the deadhead time, is 40 minutes, and your average number of stops per mile is 1.02. So it's not that you're having a lot of stops, it's that you're a relatively large district, and your actual load is about 29, 30 students on an average per bus. And again, as I said, you're using almost all of the time that you have available to pick up students. And it's no different in the afternoon, with the exception is that you run one more route in the afternoon than you do in the morning with the same number of buses. In the afternoon, however, you're using 96% of your tier time available, so your routes are even, even more tightly constructed in the afternoon. We looked at staffing, and the staffing appears to be adequate for the size and the structure of your operation. The fact that you run some of your own buses and you contract out for, for the others, the staffing appeared to be appropriate. We looked at your, your fleet, and we found that you run a relatively old fleet of school buses. The average age is 6.1 years old, average miles, about 70,000 miles. You only have seven of them under warranty, which represents 43.8. Our recommendation is that you develop a capital plan for sequential replacement of buses. What you'd like to do is to be at that 50% mark, where 50% of your buses are under warranty at all times. What that does is it helps to, one, minimize the cost of repairs and maintenance, and secondly, more reliable vehicles. Your van fleet, however, average age was only 1.7 years, and 14 of them, 100% of them, are still under warranty. So you've done a greater investment in your van fleet than you have in your, your bus fleet. We looked at facilities. You don't have a transportation facility per se. You park in a school parking lot. There appeared to be adequate space for both buses and, and driver vehicles. We, we noticed that, that the Department of Public Works has recently purchased a, a new facility, a new building. Adam and I toured both the old building, the current building, and, and the new building. We spoke to the director of the DPW, and he indicated a willingness, at least to discuss, not a commitment, but at least willing to discuss a cooperative relationship with the school district to share maintenance and repair space. And we recommend that if the district chooses to expand its operation, that it do so. That would help both the DPW and, and, and the school district. He also pointed out to us adjoining property that the, that the town owns, a large parking area that certainly would house all of the current contractor buses, should the district want to take over that, that operation. So, fueling, there are two fuel sites at the DPW, used both by DPW and the school district, and that fueling appears to be adequate for, for, for both entities. The, the town buys its fuel off the state contract. At the time that we looked at it, diesel fuel was 3, 3.49, $3.49 a gallon, which was, which was a, a pretty good price. Again, the DPW director even pointed out several bays that he thought would be Again, the DPW director even pointed out several bays that he thought would be that could be used for school bus repairs and maintenance. I put I took pictures while we toured. They're in your report, so you can actually see what we saw. Part of what we were asked to do was to look at the cost-benefit of whether it made sense for you to continue to own and operate your own vehicles or take over the current private contractor, contract. And you'll see on page thirty-seven, we have a list of about twenty different assumptions that we made going into that. Part of it had to do with maintaining the same level for fuel costs, same number of routes, same number of vehicles, and that not only would you have to purchase seventy-five buses, but you'd have to purchase an additional seven buses for spares and athletics. Also looked at the current cost of your current contract cost, and we looked at what the next couple of years are under your current contract. Then, when we went further beyond two years, we used the Milton bid, which we just opened in January, as an indicator of what the private contractor, it's the same contractor, by the way, would look like going out three, four, or five years. And you'll see that it's a big jump. The bottom line to the cost-benefit study is that in year one, it would cost you money to take over because of the front-end first-year cost, capital investment, et cetera. After the first year, the line starts to diverge a little bit, to the point where in the third year, you're saving about three-and-a-half percent of the cost of contracting. The question becomes, to what degree you want to invest in a capital, large amount of capital to get started? And for three-point-four percent, is it worth taking on the headache of another seventy-five buses? What we suggest is before you make that decision, since you have two years left on your contract, you may want to consider actually going out to bid next year, a year early, going out to bid and getting actual numbers from the contractors as to what that future cost would be. My guess is that your current contractor may sharpen their pencil from what they did in Milton in order to keep this contract because they already have a heavy investment in this community and a long history in this community. Having said that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And also, should you have questions after tonight, just send them to Adam, and he certainly will forward them to me, and we're happy to answer any questions that you have.
Excellent report. Do we have questions?
When it comes to if we decided to take over the buses, would you recommend, one of the things that has been talked about is taking over piecemeal? Would you recommend doing that as like a to alleviate the learning curve on taking over the buses and what the capacity is, or trying to engage with that, or is that...
I would not recommend taking it on piecemeal. The reason being, if you were to take, we'll just say, half of it, your other half is going to be very expensive.
Yes.
Because their capital cost, their fixed cost is going to be all built into half the number of buses, and that cost per day is going to become prohibitive. Given that you have two years to work with, you have plenty of time to do what you need to do with regard to due diligence to take it all over. Part of when we looked at creating the situation where you would take it over includes hiring or promoting a transportation manager who would have the capability to oversee a larger operation, whether it's promoting somebody from within.
Yes.
Or hiring a different person. And in addition, would require some additional people, mechanics and dispatcher, routing. So it's we tried to be all-inclusive. Just to backtrack for a second, prior to my retirement, I was superintendent for the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative, and we actually operated all transportation for seven-member school districts. So we were running two-hundred-and-eighty buses, both day, night, and weekends. And so we built four bus depots across the county to service that operation. And so we're pretty familiar with what needs to be done to for a seventy-five, or in this case, an eighty-bus contract.
Thank you.
Sprite.
What would you say is the average timeframe for a fuel contract? I'm just more concerned in regards to the variable of the cost of diesel fuel.
Okay.
And just wondering, what would it look like from a state perspective? How long can you lock in?
The town purchases its diesel fuel off the state contract, so that's fixed for the year.
One year?
For one year. Yeah, yeah. So that every year, it's it, the state sets the benchmark for fuel. And by the way, fuel has been coming down as opposed to going up.
Mrs. Margadels?
Thank you. So you talked about a collaborative with other towns. We had shared routes with, say, Norwood and Walpole for sped transportation when we brought it in-house. Would we have less of a chance because of the expanse of our district to be collaborative with other school districts?
No, not at all. Once you build the map with your computerized routing system, you know exactly what excess capacity you have on your vehicles.
Right.
And either your sped director or your pupil services director, being in contact with others in the area, it's in everyone's best interest to cost-share routes and split bill.
So is that offset work where you've seen as a group, have those communities gone out to bid, or have they just brought everything in-house and been a collaborative?
It's a combination of both.
Right.
In our case, we owned and operated everything. We didn't contract anything.
And I think you're correct that since we have a two-year advance notice, I think that year-over-year cost is going to skyrocket, right? I mean, that two-point-seven isn't going to be seen anywhere in the contract. When Milton went out to bid, did they ever consider doing something alternatively?
They, when we went out to bid, and this is public information now, they awarded on their regular transportation bid only. They did not award on their special ed and their homeless transportation. They continued to do it with the number of van contractors that they've already used because no one contractor came in and bid for it all.
Right.
And so they're going to continue to use the local private contractors that they have. And they also do cost-sharing where they can and split billing with area communities.
Last question. You said we had forty percent of the seats that are being utilized when we move students. What percentage of ridership would we get into being in trouble with our tier time? And I know you said you never adjust your tier time, but there is a reality, if we get a certain amount of ridership with our bell schedule, like what percent, do you guys model it out to like what percentage of seats would be utilized where we'd say, okay, we can't meet those?
Let me just tell you the standard. The industry standard is seventy-three to seventy-five percent.
Right.
Of ridership, to be highly efficient.
Right.
If your bell schedule supports that. For a district of this size and these demographics, you're not going to get there unless you get to the point of running routes that are an hour and a half.
Or more buses.
Or more buses, or less buses. Or the other trick that you can use is you can use smaller buses. And statistically, what that does is it increases your ridership percentage based on seats if you have fewer seats.
Right. Good. Thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
Just one more question. You talked about the two-year time that we have. Do you know just offhand what the ordering lag time is if we decided to order buses? You know, so like how that compares?
The typical type bus, your seventy-one-passenger typical bus, six to eight months delivery time.
Okay, thank you.
However, there are two distributors who, in anticipation, ordered excess buses this year and have buses in their parking lot. They don't have seventy-five of them, but they have some. So if you, even if you wanted to get involved earlier, you could buy a combination of new buses and used buses. One of the reason of buying used buses, when I say used buses, I don't mean ten-year-old buses, I mean buses that are three or four years old, is that not all your buses come up for replacement at the same time, and you can stagger your purchase and your capital plan.
That's a very good point.
Vans, you can pretty much purchase in about a month to two-month delivery.
For anyone else, I just have one question, kind of following up on Ms. Jackson. So within, so having that two-year timeframe, when would be the sweet spot where we'd need to be making a decision if we were trying to take things over for that 2027, 2028 school year, like sometime in this next year, I assume?
Typically, when we do bidding for a school district, we suggest you want to be on the front end of the bidding season as opposed to the back end of the bidding season, which means that we go to bid in October, right after all your routes settle in for the start of the school year. You open bids prior to the end of December, which does two things. It gives you a year and a half before implementation, and, secondly, gives you solid budget numbers going into the following budget year.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Now, if not extremely informative report, really appreciate the work you're doing for the district.
Thank you. And I want to thank Adam because it's his office that generated an awful lot of data because we're data hungry when we do these reports. And I appreciate the time and the effort that he took to turn around information on relatively a short-time schedule.
You really did a great job parsing it out for us. I appreciate it.
Yes, well done.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next up, we've got our big topic for the night, which is our recommendations for the location of Flemish Early Childhood Center. So Dr. Campbell?
Thank you very much. See if this clicker works. So as you know, we came before you April, I believe it was April 7th, with a concern and an initial recommendation regarding the preschool. Since then, we've had additional information. We've sought a lot of feedback. We've toured the facility. I want to go through that, two facilities. I want to go through that and provide an updated recommendation based on all the information that we have. Not to read this, but just again, this is why we're here under Massachusetts general law, that this is a responsibility to make sure that we have and maintain a safe and sufficient schoolhouse for all of our students. This is something that has been on my mind for quite some time. We made it part of our strategic plan because we knew that this was an area of need, something that going back when we were building South High School, I was really concerned about. But we did put it out as a goal in our strategic plan, really looking at how we can expand opportunities for early education, both for our student, for our children, and for our high schoolers as well in terms of their educational opportunities. So the initial recommendation was April 7th. The first meeting in April was to relocate from PCIS to South Middle School and to do that not for this coming fiscal year, but the following fiscal year. Again, I'm not going to go through all of it in great detail, but we know that we have an increase, a growing increase of population of our preschoolers, particularly for students who are being receiving early intervention, being evaluated at our preschools and being identified as requiring special education assistance. We've gone up forty-one percent in the last five years. The state has gone up an average six percent. So this is, there's a large need, and we need space for that. Some of the students that are coming to us have complex needs that require a lot of mobility equipment, so not only are their numbers going up, but space is very concerning because of the equipment needs that come with any of our students. We've talked about the parking and traffic challenges in the current space before, storage challenges, the infrastructure logistics, and again, also trying to find ways to enhance our collaboration and educational opportunities for students, our high schoolers particularly. Some of the concerns when we first presented this in April were the place, space, size, and the location at South Middle School, fewer toilets and sinks, the narrowness of the hallways because of the lockers there. Some of the therapeutic space needs need renovation, and it does not allow for expansion of our preschool, meaning that while there are two extra spaces, we're going to fill up right away. So it really doesn't provide room for the growth that we potentially could see in the coming years. You know, and some of the needs, there are identified fencing, sidewalks near the entryway, storage shed, additional shelving, parking near the entrance, and a removal of any structures that may be unsafe. And these are things that, again, we would, we've not only toured and looked at, but our facilities director is aware of that and as well as our CCTE director, and we would address that. So since April, we've, again, we've compiled a list of concerns and needs expressed by staff. We walked both PCIS and South Middle School with our teacher representatives, school committee, school committee members, put that twice, sorry, school and district administration. We did that in May, May 15th and May 27th. We've also had further discussion based on the needs and things that we've seen and the concerns that came up with our director of facilities and our CCTE director, who's in charge of vocational education programs, all of our vocational education programs. So given what we've explored, given the conversations, given the needs that have been expressed, and given the fact that we know that we will need additional space, our, my revised recommendation to the committee is to utilize both PCIS and South Middle School for preschool programming. It certainly provides ample space for expansion, providing numerous classrooms in both locations, would reduce congestion of the existing program, and expresses concerns and constraints of the one location. Ideally, having two locations is not only good for the expansions, but it's also good when we think about the north part of town and the south part of town. So it provides opportunities for flexibility for families potentially there, too. And again, the recommendation for initiation is not for next year, it's for the following year, so the 26, 27 school year. Dr. Blaisdell worked on the preschool expenses, and these are estimates, as you can see, to move to South Middle School. We're looking at just over $200,000, and that was the estimate that was provided, you know, without the specifics, the first time that we talked about it, but here are some of the specifics there. Moving to two sites, you see that that estimate goes up. However, I'll point out that there are highlights there in blue. Those are staff that would be initiated the following fiscal year, so it's not something that we have to, we need to account for now. What we're looking for is one, permission to utilize funds that are available to do some of the equipment and facility issues that you see listed here, and not the blue staff. That would be something that would be put into our budget, proposed budget next year when we go before you with budget during budget season. So again, the proposed locations, they're both off Long Pond Road. They're three-point-nine miles apart, so they're not very far apart. But again, it does provide a south option and a north option, and it expands our programming I mentioned this before. Again, this is just showing you the total space, while South Middle School space overall is larger. Again, having the availability of all these classrooms would allow us to expand. It also allows us to use some of the unused spaces could serve other roles for the meantime. So, for example, we know that the science labs came up because of the reconstruction that would need to be done in there, and we were, you know, we're committed to do that. But if that space wasn't needed initially in the first year or two even, it could be used as an alternate space for staff, for example, storage or a mother capacity. The possibility of having lab classrooms at both locations for students who may be doing internships or doing hours to model lessons, family resource room, these are some ideas that could be used for the space because we would have significant amount of space with the two locations being considered. Again, and I highlighted this last time we were together, but the other great feature of... about South Middle School is the easy access for early education and care students at Plymouth South High School. It would just give them a very valuable experience, and it's walking distance, so they'd be able to walk over there as well. We wouldn't need to transport those students, which is a great feature. So, if this recommendation is approved, we would start with the, we've already started with the PCIS playground. That is something that is, has in the works. We're going to do that anyways. We're committed to that. I know that there are some options that were looked at and they think selected, if I'm not mistaken. So, we would be doing that over at PCIS, but we would also want to do that at South Middle School, the fencing, modification of the bathrooms, signage, everything that we talked about before. And waiting until FY '27 to initiate it again allows us the opportunity to incorporate students from CCTE vocational programs in a number of the trades, to be quite honest, for some of the less substantial projects. But there's a lot of possibilities there, and it's an exciting opportunity in addition to getting students in the arts to do some murals. I know that that was talked about before. From what I've learned, it didn't happen, but we would commit to doing that and really trying to make it a space that feels like an early education center. So, again, we're excited about this opportunity to expand early education and to provide spaces that really are going to, I think, enhance the learning environment for our staff and students and also keep the costs low. I mean, some people may say that $200,000 or, you know, $270,000 is a lot. When you're looking at an early education center, it's not. It's really not. It's a very, it's a fraction of a fraction of a percentage of our overall budget, and I think it's an investment worth making. So, with that, happy to answer any questions.
If she doesn't mind being put on the spot, I don't know if Principal Tobin has received any feedback from staff about this plan as an alternative to moving the program. Has there been more positive feedback, or how was everyone feeling about it?
I think that, again, as I said before when we discussed this, you know, regardless, it's not ideal, but I think understanding that we have a lot of opportunity with having both spaces is definitely more favorable than trying to move PCIS to PSMs and all of us try to squeeze in that new space. So, I definitely think there's a more positive feel, and I could be wrong, but I think there is, you know, a bit of more positive feel to having both spaces and really being able as a staff to look at the opportunities that we have moving forward, you know, for programming and for the space in general.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Ms. Jackson?
Just one statement and one question. I just wanted to say thank you and to your staff representatives for making the time to go through and answer a lot of questions. It was very helpful, and it was very helpful in figuring out the, you know, idea of doing two spaces and figuring out, you know, what the shortcomings were with both spaces and with the whole process. So, it was very valuable, and I just want to say thank you to everybody for that. During that conversation, we did talk about some of the, let's say, shortcomings with the PCIS space currently, too, and I was wondering if that was also factored into the budget and because we had talked about, like, maybe making some adjustments at the same time.
I think that whether, that's, I'd say no. The only thing, the toilets, we've talked about the bathrooms, too, and I think even seeing if there's a way to update them and some of the maintenance, and that's very, that's something that we could absorb within the operational budget.
And also, like, the storage.
But, yes. So, I think it does allow us, and we talked about that, and we talked about that on one of the walks, you know, we walked both spaces. So, it is an opportunity to look at that space, both South Middle School, but also the current space, and say, all right, well, as we're looking at this space, how can we improve it today and also for tomorrow? So, that when we're, you know, should we be in two locations improving that? And we should be looking at that anyway, so if there's an opportunity. But that's not really factored into that. I don't, I think it's something that could be absorbed within the facility's budget to do some of those maintenance repairs because we have funds in there for that, but...
This summer, we have some plans just for some cosmetic things in the current bathroom.
Yeah.
Just some painting and then replacing the baseboard and all that, like, rusty wall things. We're going to get that taken care of this summer.
I was also thinking of, like, the lack of private space that you sometimes need for meetings and how that might be able to be addressed, and whether if we have more stuff absorbed at one place, there might be an opportunity to create a space so that it's not like your office or, you know what I mean? So...
Yeah, I think, you know, when FY '27, you know, should this take place, we would have an opportunity now to rethink that space as well and to repurpose some of those spaces as well. Absolutely.
And also, I appreciate that we've talked about the staff being involved and coming up with some of the decisions because I think it's really important that them being the experts, they have a voice and, you know, in how the space is built out because we have the time to do that.
And we talked about one example that sticks out for me when we were in the motor room at your current space, for example, and just the location of some of the, and some of that may be prohibitive based on where the ceiling joists are, but it's something to consider, like, could we repurpose that? Is there a different location where it may be better? These are things that we can look at, you know, moving forward.
Yeah.
Ms. Bryant?
Yes, I would just, you know, echo in regards to thanking the staff for their walkthrough and sharing, you know, a lot of the behind-the-curtain. I really enjoyed the experience of seeing that storage unit in the back that I will not talk about publicly, but I don't think until you see it, you really understand how much storage needs are involved. I do think that the new option is a great opportunity, being someone who's been very vocal about the experiences people have within our district, but specifically options in north versus options in south. And even though it doesn't seem like it's very distant, it still is an opportunity and a removal of barrier for people to be able to have access. I think what's really important, I would say to me as we move forward with whatever decisions that we are making tonight, that we think of, you know, what does this look like as a disruption to employees, knowing that some of those skill sets will need to be shared to make sure that our students have an equitable experience at both places. I think what's important to the point of the bathrooms in the current space, as well as some of those private areas where students need special assistance in feeding or other things, that we make sure that the spaces that we are designing, whether it's in the new building as well as a current space, are dignified and inclusive. And when I say inclusive, not just to meet the students' needs, but to be considerate of the teachers that are also sharing that space and their voices, to the point that you pointed out in regards to the joists, understanding that, you know, the teachers that are involved do bring that level of expertise. And I would just echo to my peers here that I would also think in regards to the investment that we would be considering not only, you know, short-term but long-term to our community and everything that we're talking about here in regards to, you know, transportation and people seeking services outside of the district because we're not able to meet their needs. So, I, again, thank you. Thank you to everyone who participated in the tour, and I'm hoping from my purview, no matter how the vote goes, that I'm able to just continue to lean in and elevate any concerns.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. Any other questions that Mr. Smart does?
So, on the playgrounds, Chris, are these, so, one 60K and the other one's 58, are those named after anyone? Are they new playgrounds? Like, do we ever have the option to go out and get someone to underwrite the construction of a playground that's looking for positive recognition?
Oh, I don't think...
I mean, because we had playgrounds that we would build and a business entity wanted to say, you know, I was part of underwriting this, and they got a simple sign, but it was money that we pulled back. Do we have a group internally that does that, or is that something that we could pursue?
I'm not certain. I don't know, I'm wondering, I think we may have a policy that prohibits that.
Yes.
To a degree, if I'm not mistaken.
We have a policy that prohibits, like, say, a large business that we buy all our technology from, wanted to put their name underwrite and wipe away the 60K.
Yeah.
Just have it recognized. Does that violate our policy?
It's in policy.
The PTA can donate money towards stuff like that.
So, the PTA could take it.
They could raise it and donate, yeah.
Right. It's still a fundraising effort in regards to...
Right.
It's 120 grand of the 400, and any money we could claw back from partnering with an approved commercial entity would be, you know, should be explored.
I just don't know if we could brand it. I think that's the, that's the rub, is that we could have...
Yeah, this is naming, yeah, branding.
And naming and alignment.
All right.
Always looking for donations and support.
Yeah.
Yes, for sure.
Yeah.
To your point, you know, and we've, partnerships in the community, we're working on a partnership across the street at Nathaniel Morton, for example, with the parking lot. So, there's some possibilities there related to this, but not for the preschool currently. But, you know, again, we've had in-kind, like, labor and support and things like that, but always open to looking for donations, for sure.
Mr. Morgan?
I was just going to comment that I kind of favored the one location at Plymouth South Middle School versus the dual locations. A little less money, and I don't like the two locations, per se. But, you know, I appreciate we did listen to staff and kind of got their feedback, but I still kind of leans toward the one location at Plymouth South.
Ms. Shaw?
I just have a, it's just a general comment, I just, to echo, thank you for your staff in leading us around in the tours, and just as a personal thing, this speaks to me a little bit, and I know that I have discussed this when I spent time on CPAC, so I know, Holly, this is something that was important to you, but I, this speaks to a bigger vision for me of students being able to make connections with people in their neighborhoods. So, if we have one in South Plymouth and one in North Plymouth, that gives much more opportunity for kids, even as young as preschool, to be making connections with peers that are living close to them. So, we don't have a student, you know, that's going to be in a North Plymouth elementary school that is making connections, not that that's a bad thing, but it makes it a little easier on families if your students and your child's peers are closer and closer proximity to you. So, that's one of the other reasons that I really like the both sites. We have two middle schools, we have two high schools. Having two preschools makes more sense than having just the one. So, I think that this is, this is great. Thank you for all of your hard work and for everyone's feedback, and I welcome feedback in my email at any time. Thank you.
Ms. Bryant, or Ms. Jackson? I just had one question, actually. Ms. Jackson teed me up a little bit. When we walked through the schools, the feedback I was hearing from the teacher representatives was very much, there's lots of details that need to be worked out, nothing that was not, you know, not achievable, doable, but it seemed to me that you really need a, you know, a really collaborative process to work out all those details, so like in the design phase. So, I would like to understand a little more about how, what the plan is to, you know, make sure we're getting that feedback, you know, not just now it'll help us make a decision, but more over the next year to get that, you know, to make sure we're, you know, understanding their feedback. I mean, simple things like, you know, room assignments, it was a lot of things like, oh, wait, this really, you know, this is what the draft looked like, but it really doesn't make sense. So, and those are things we don't need to answer in order to make a decision, but there are things that need to be worked out over the next year to make sure that what we implement is, you know, is a plan that makes sense.
Yeah, so I would, I would think, you know, my initial response to that is, when I think about, like, when we were building the high school, and we had like a two-week look ahead, not that it would be every two weeks, but, you know, we were meeting and we were working with our project manager and the construction crew two weeks ahead, and we were consulting them, and they were getting our feedback going back. I would imagine that we would set up a timeline for anticipated projects and construction, you know, construction projects. Also, some of the concerns and prior to any of that coming in, bring people in to get that feedback and give periodic regular updates throughout the course of the year for everything that we're addressing that's been brought up in those concerns so that we can meet it as best we can. Some things may be impossible to, for example, the location of the playground at South Middle School, but to that point, there's also an opportunity for expansion for other spaces. So, these are things that, you know, we need to continue to have conversations and just set up regular sort of opportunities, and we could do it similar to the way that we did it with our building reps and get some feedback, kind of like having an advisory council.
That's on the, yeah, I'd like to see that kind of formalized, where we have some, like, subcommittee of, you know, staff and, you know, two or three school committee members that are meeting, whether it's monthly or at certain set milestones, to make sure that that feedback is, you know, being, you know, one given but incorporated into the, into the design. Because, again, there's, you know, lots of details that we don't need to work out today, but I want to make sure we have that process set up.
Yeah, no, I think that's a great idea.
Ms. Jackson?
I was going to pretty much say what you just said, that I think it's important that, given that the concerns were raised to us, that we have some school committee liaisons on the project so that we know that we're keeping feedback, not that I don't trust everybody, I do, but that we know that we're also a voice for the teachers and the people who initially raised concerns for us.
And to that point, if I may, I mean, it is part of the strategic plan. It's the school committee's plan. So, this has been something that we looked at, that we knew there was a need. We had lots of conversations about it at, when we were in our working groups then. This is something that I think is certainly worthy of having now that, you know, should we have an action item related to that benchmark that we're trying to do, we should have something in place to kind of walk through it periodically and regularly.
Okay. All right, so pending whatever gets voted on tonight, then I will, I would plan, just using my authority, is here to set up a subcommittee, and we'll, you know, assign committee members, then work with you, that, you know, pull in, pull in staff, but kind of hold, you know, make sure that's actually happening.
Sorry. Can I give one last, huge shout-out to Ms. Tobin.
Thanks.
She's been on the hot seat, I would say, whether it's in school committee or, you know, navigating as kind of the middle to all parties involved. And I just want to say, I appreciate any question that I've asked, I've gotten answers right away, and I just really appreciate how you've implied voices and spoke for our children as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. This project, thank you. This project is very important, I think, for the growth and the, you know, the well-being of our students. We're all here because of the students, and I think this project really, you know, speaks to that, and the staff and their voices, again, are very, very important in this project. So, thank you.
Yeah. I will gladly second a shout-out to Ms. Tobin and her staff. So, thank you. All right. Do we have any other comments or questions? If not, do we have a motion?
I will move that the Plymouth School Committee approve the location of the Plymouth Early Childhood Center at both Plymouth Community Intermediate School at 117 Long Pond Road and Plymouth South Middle School at 488 Long Pond Road, effective July 1st, 2026, as presented.
I second.
All right. Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion there? All right, looks like the motion passes unanimously, so we have a new project. So, all right, we'll look forward to working with you to make this a reality, and thank you for being part of the process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tobin. All right, let me get back to the agenda.
Subcommittees.
Comes up.
All right, next up is subcommittees. So, speaking, so, I will note that there's going to be a new subcommittee being formed. I'm not going to go through this in...
go through this in detail, but just to note that, um, the committee assignments have been, uh, posted for the twenty twenty, uh, five, twenty-six, uh, school year. I would say probably without fail, I was able to accommodate anyone that had specific, uh, requests. So if you requested a specific committee, there's probably a ninety-nine percent chance that that's what you're on, as well as, um, school liaison, um, assignments. There I did have to play a little bit to make sure that everything is, uh, covered. Thankfully, thankful to a couple of members that did not have preferences, so I was able to kind of slot them in. But I think for the most, everyone that had a specific request, um, had that. So if there's anything that you were, you know, not thrilled with, um, please let me know. We can try to accommodate that. But I was, I think I was able to really get everybody everything, uh, they needed. I will call out two new line items towards the bottom of the subcommittee assignments, which is, um, uh, added an English, uh, learner parent advisory committee. So LPAC, that committee's been around for a year, but we did not have, um, assignments to it. So, um, for this year, I've assigned myself and, uh, Ms. Heywood, as we actually, we're both English language learners ourselves, growing up in non-English-speaking homes. So, um, but obviously we'll rotate that as we do the rest of them. And then we also, we had talked about this back in, um, our winter or February, um, uh, retreat, but hadn't actually, uh, formalized the creation of the committee, but have also created a new member onboarding, uh, uh, committee since we have never had a formal way of onboarding new members. And that's obviously been a, a big need the last, uh, year or so. So we've got Mr. Morgan, Ms. Heywood, Ms. Bryant, um, being the charter members of that to come up with kind of a process and manual for onboarding new people and actually, you know, um, kind of helping them out when they, when they join the committee. Um, I think everything else is pretty standard.
Very well.
Exactly. We'll give you the real treatment. Ms. Bryant?
I wanted to say if you needed a backup for Plymouth Harbor Academy, all the high schools I see have two. I'm more than happy to lean in.
Oh, that'd be, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Also, that, that one, because it doesn't have the typical, um.
Right.
School council, doesn't have quite the, uh, the lift. So yeah, I'd be happy to add you there. I was trying to be, uh, make sure I didn't overload you, but I will make that note.
I'm a glutton.
All right. Uh, any other, uh, comments or questions or anything like, is anything, any special accommodations? All right. I, oh, probably the only other one where I had to make, uh, a tough choice was we, because of, uh, people that had, uh, gotten appointed and elected in the recent year, we had too many members assigned, you know, officially and unofficially to the diversity, uh, committee. So that has, I did have to narrow that down to, uh, three folks. So I think it's probably the only one where we actually had to lose, um, you know, lose a member that was previously on there. But I think everything else is pretty standard. Um, I did want to go ahead and populate the committees that don't actually need representation this year, just in case a need were ever to come up, such as, uh, negotiating team, uh, the strategic planning, uh, committee, et cetera. So obviously those ones will meet as needed, but, you know, don't have a, a specific urgent need. All right. If not, we'll keep moving. Thanks. All right. Next up, we've had, uh, the, Ms. Carolyn Rains give us a health services director's update. Last of all, the directors and principals, but certainly not least.
Just hit the, the right arrow. It moves you forward.
Good evening, everybody. Um, so for those of you who don't know me, my name is Carolyn Rains. I'm the Director of School Health Services for the district. Um, and I just want to thank all of you for being here tonight and to my administrative team, no yawning, I'm just kidding, um, to be here. And hopefully this presentation, um, will be informative for you, especially for those of you who have never, um, seen it before. And I do want to thank, I do have some of my nursing staff that are here. So, um, at the end of the presentation, if you have questions, they may be the best people to talk to, um, about certain programs or anything specific that you have as we go, go along here. Okay. Obviously, I'm not technologically savvy here. Okay. So, um, we have a grant from the Department of Public Health, um, a pretty large grant, um, that we've been getting here in the district for many, many years. Um, it did change its scope and focus, um, probably about eight, eight or nine years ago, I believe, to the, um, comprehen- it went from, from the essential school health service grant to the comprehensive school health service grant, um, with a focus, um, specifically around health equity for students. Go back. So again, the goals of our, our health.
My head's on.
So the goals of our, our health service department really are to be, to really stress the importance between the, you know, the link between health and learning, um, and looking at, you know, obviously providing a seamless comprehensive health program for the children, um, and to be a link between the educational and health communities. So back in previous presentations, we talked a little bit about the whole child model, you know, the whole school, whole community, whole child, um, which was from the CDC. Um, this is from the National Association of School Nurses. It does address, um, it's a framework looking at specifically around the standards of school nurse practice, around, you know, health equity, quality of care, um, collaboration, um, cultural humility, and so many of the things that the nurses do. And this is sort of a great segue into some of the programs we offer. Um, the quality improvement, um, looks at a lot of the data around some of the programs we run that definitely tell stories around care coordination, um, leadership, and our partnership with the community and public health. So our mission in the district really is to be, again, like I talked a little bit with the goals, is really to be a link between the health, um, and education teams. So kind of like a little bit about perspective, like what do school nurses do? Um, and I know that many, many years ago, I, if anybody had ever told me I would have worked in school health, I would never have believed it. I don't know what I thought school nurses did, but it does go beyond the Band-Aids, I promise. Um, I think, and everybody has a different perception, and it's really interesting to see people coming into the district, whether it be student nurses or nurses that are being mentored by my nurses, like that are in graduate programs, looking at the complexities of what the nurses do every day. Um, so it's really, it's, you know, it's always great to get their feedback. And I'll talk a little bit about more as we go through that presentation. Let's go, again, I think many of you here obviously are familiar with, with the nurses are doing. We always focus on student-centered care, obviously keeping the family in mind. Um, I think some of the requirements of the role, you know, obviously have to do with doing skilled nursing care, giving kids their medications, treatments, um, looking at health policy development. Um, and we also, in, you know, in Plymouth here, we also have the responsibility of caring for staff as well. And looking again, like I do think numbers are important, and we do a lot of data collection. We have a monthly report that we submit to the Department of Public Health. It's part of our grant requirement. But above and beyond that, an annual report that's extremely comprehensive. And, um, I think sometimes we get lost in the numbers. I mean, the nurses are administering hundred, I mean, thousands of treatments a year, thousands of medication administrations, um, a lot of comprehensive, complex care for children with medical needs. Um, but I think what's important to know is just basically that, you know, again, we do have days where we have emergency situations. We have, um, health screenings that are all based on master law, um, and a lot of the things that we're doing are requirements of the state of Massachusetts. So it's not, it's a very busy, busy job. So the data collection obviously tells a story and facilitates so much. Um, I think that when, you know, when we're looking at some of the examples I'm gonna get into here, um, you'll see what I mean in, in terms of just how important the data collection piece is. We do have an electronic health record, um, again, for nursing, extremely, extremely important in terms of, um, making sure our documentation is accurate. Um, and that's really a critical piece. So I think we did this, these numbers were from a week ago, and I believe we're up over eighty-five thousand in terms of total health visits over the school year, which is actually notable. I know that, um, some larger districts, districts like the Brockton Public Schools don't see too many more kids. I'm not saying that we have needy students, but, um, it does speak to the importance of having a nurse in a building. Um, and a big piece, again, with having a school nurse is having, um, a return to class rate. I mean, getting these kids back to class, um, and back to learning is really important, addressing their needs, but making sure that they, um, don't miss out too much time in the classroom. And so, um, again, and when we'll talk a little bit about attendance, that's another, another big piece. In school districts across the country, they've looked, and when you have a full-time dedicated school nurse in a school, your, um, attendance is usually much better. So kind of just, I always like to make a little analogy, and this was probably the best one I could come up with this year, but there's about, um, close to over, not close to ninety thousand people that go to Disney, Disney World every day, and that's about as many kids as we see during the school year. Um, so one of the things I wanted to look at with our grant, and we talk about this a lot, um, especially when it comes to health screenings that are required by law, um, the school nurses in every building on average see about eighty-five percent of the student population, um, during the given school year, even if it's one visit or if it's, you know, ten visits a month. I mean, pretty much eighty-five percent of the kids know the school nurse. But there is that population, smaller population that does not. Um, and I think that's what is beneficial with health screenings, is that that's the great one-on-one time nurses have with kids. So we thought, you know, what can we do to look at different populations of kids, um, that go to the nurse, making sure that, um, again, you know, we don't have, um, you know, there are cultural differences, obviously, across Plymouth. We do have, you know, different socioeconomic groups. We have kids, English language learners. We have kids in foster care, kids who are homeless. Um, and there are other, um, situations where we also can't, um, don't have an easier time tracking health office visits, you know, for kids who are dealing with, um, substance abuse in the home, um, or domestic violence and other things, because it's never really, not everybody comes with, you know, it's not an equal playing field, that's for sure. So, um, just wanted to look at every quarter. Karen Vanette does help me. Um, our Aspen does align with our electronic health record, so it talks to each other. So we can track, with the help of Aspen, um, we can track. So the average student who is ELL does see the nurse more than the non-ELL students. And this is some of the things that I really wanted to see. Um, students who are homeless usually see the nurse more than kids who are not. Um, socio-economically disadvantaged children also see the nurse more than kids who are not. So again, looking at, you know, some race and ethnicity issues too, male and female, just getting an idea and looking, um, male, female, non-binary students, pretty much equal across the board. Um, and then, you know, you can just see some of those numbers. So these are kids in our third quarter who accessed the nurse at least four times during the school year, which is a good thing, because we want those kids to know that they have, that, you know, they can receive care as well, and that there's not, you know, any, um, challenge or barrier for them seeking the health office out. Um, so prioritizing obviously chronic medical conditions. Um, for all of these numbers, um, we're looking at, you know, kids who are on five oh fours, kids on IEPs with some of these, um, nursing services written in. We have plenty of individualized healthcare plans, um, pretty time-intensive when a nurse is spending time with a lot of these students, um, you know, that have significant issues during the school day. Um, life-threatening allergies, this was one of the first years, we've only had two EpiPens administered, which is very unusual. We usually have a lot more. Um, and these were for two known allergies, which again, normally, our EpiPen administration is really for, you know, first-time dose, kids have first-time reaction. Um, but again, we do have a pretty large number of students, over three hundred, with life-threatening allergies in the district that have EpiPens. We also have stock Epi as well in our schools. Um, the concussion data district-wide, we have added a few numbers since, um, early June above these. Um, we do look very closely at, um, managing concussions, because obviously there is, not only does it impact physical health, but it also impacts academics. Um, and when you get to, you know, sports-related concussions, we do report, um, do a pretty, um, comprehensive data report to the Department of Public Health for both of our, all of our secondary schools, both middle schools and high schools. Um, and they, they basically want to know, like, is this sports-related or not? These particular, even in young children, we're seeing more and more concussions in elementary school. And again, most of those are outside of school, but it does, again, it impacts their recess, it impacts participating in PE, um, it may impact some of their classes. So, and I definitely saw that as a high school nurse, um, pretty significant issues. You know, again, you know, working with the families, working with the providers, maybe they're seeing a specialist, um, working with the teachers, athletic director, athletic trainer, um, making sure the kids aren't going back to sports too soon. Um, and that also includes some of their outside activities as well. So concussion management is pretty time-intensive. And that law, um, began, it was two thousand and ten, and certainly impacts schools tremendously. Um, our nine-one-one calls, um, again, you know, obviously unanticipated, um, for a number of different reasons. We utilize nine-one-one during the school year, and, um, based on the nursing judgment, um, a, you know, a staff person or a student would be taken to the hospital. Um, we also, um, are, you know, we also take care of our staff. So Tammy, Tammy was taking a blood pressure downstairs recently, and she.
Very enthusiastic.
Tammy is our case.
That's to bring it down.
Yeah. She's our case manager, um, with a psychiatric background, and her office just happens to be in Plymouth Harbor Academy. So she, out of the goodness of her heart, really takes care of those kids down there and makes sure they have their screenings done and makes sure they have their needs met. Um, and that includes the staff. Did their screenings, CPR, and everything with them. Field trips, um, I believe I've caught all of them. I may be off by a few, but I believe three hundred and ninety-three field trips that I'm aware of through the nurses, um, a little fewer, although it doesn't seem like that, this year required a nurse to attend. Um, and we have pretty rigid requirements for why we need nurses to go on these. And I, I really impressed with a lot of, like, you know, some of the, like, Plymouth South Middle did amazing cleaning up the beach, and then they were at the cemetery putting flags out for Memorial Day. And I think a lot of the field trips are great and very educational. And so, um, it's great that the kids have these opportunities, but it's, it's really time-intensive to make sure that we have coverage if we need it. Health screenings, again, state law in Massachusetts. Massachusetts, although is a model state for many things around school health, um, we also are a little archaic in some of the demands around health screenings, um, vision, hearing, um, start from preschool on. Um, we also do postural screening, which is something that's, um, a state mandate here in Massachusetts that's not required in many states across the country. Um, and then, of course, as of twenty sixteen, started doing ESPOR screenings for one middle school grade and one high school grade. Um, and that's screening, brief intervention, and referral to treatment, talking to the kids about, um, any substance uses, certain questions that the kids are asked. And, um, so far, I think, since we've been doing this across the district, I think we've had, um, some pretty great conversations. It's a good opportunity for learning. We like to do it early on in middle school to make it more of a health promotion education program. Um, and I think that, you know, the kids are very frank and honest about what's going on. So I think it's, the screening is great. Um, as in any screening, parents can, are allowed to opt out. We do send an informational letter home for ESPOR over the summer, just to inform families on, on what it actually is. So BMI, again, you know, I don't know how, it's, it's a good indicator. I don't know that I'd take it to heart. Um, I feel like it's something that we're doing heights and weights on, on kids in grades one, four, seven, and ten. That became a law in twenty thirteen. And I think that it gives, um, it gives us a, you know, a rough idea. We used to send letters home to families, but we don't do that anymore. It looks at kids who are underweight, you know, normal, what is considered normal weight based on height and body weight. Um, and again, sometimes it's not super accurate, but our numbers are concerning for sure. Um, and again, you know, having taken care of high school kids, some of the high school athletes, um, the boys especially, um, you know, the, the more they weighed, the happier they were many times. And, um, so again, the thirty percent for grade ten, I'm not really sure specifically how accurate that is, but, um, across the district, when you're averaging all grades, it's about thirty-one point two percent. Um, and I think this is something that we shouldn't, we can probably look at next year around student, um, nurses, um, student learning goals in some of the education we do around health, um, health promotion. Jenna Sorensen and I have talked about partnering our nurses with their health education and PE teachers and, um, and looking, you know, considering some of these factors for next year and seeing if we can put some programs together for the kids. So twenty twenty-four, twenty-five was another great year. I would say very successful in many ways. Um, back in twenty twelve, um, the state required us to have medical emergency response plans. Um, as of this school year, um, it changed. The law was amended to include behavioral health emergencies as well, um, which is a really good thing. And, um, we put a comprehensive plan together every. as well, which is a really good thing, and we put a comprehensive plan together, every three years, we need, per law, we need to submit our medical, medical and now behavioral health plan to the Department of Education for review, I mean, we were cited several years ago as having a model program or a model plan in Plymouth, and we like to try to add and implement new things, I think, you know, last year, we had our great partnership with Plymouth County Outreach, and had the nalox boxes, we have, you know, in our AED cabinets, we have epinephrine, we have mobilized kits, we had a rep from the mobilized company, from Zoll, come and do a presentation to our safety committee, and also to our administrators at a PCD meeting, and talk a little bit about mobilize, we, we had had a grant with the Plymouth Police Department several years back, and had some mobilized kits that have tourniquets and clotting, different, just different types of, you know, stopping the bleed, and so we did, we're, it was great, we got to order a lot more, and so, some of our nurses who have been here a little bit longer, we have several, quite a few new nurses over the last five years, and so we did a new train-the-trainer tourniquet training, so that we're going to hopefully be able to get this back and put this, and implement this with our CPR programming in our schools, all of our nurses are BLS instructors as well, so we have a self-sustaining program. So this year, we trained 111 staff, we were able to get a lot of our elementary staff over at Nathaniel Morton on a PD day, and then we did some separate classes at the secondary level, and we're actually doing a facilities class at the end of the week. West Elementary, some of my elementary nurses do a first aid CPR program after school, so West, this is sort of a longstanding program at West Elementary, and the kids are all pretty happy with themselves here, and again, my nurse from South Elementary is here, and she trained her students as well, and, and again, so if you have any questions, maybe at the end, but I think the kids were very happy to participate, and they learned a lot. In addition, you know, obviously, the Yellow Tulip Project has been big across the district over the last several years, my nurse, Antonia Wheeler, from Nathaniel Morton is here, she did a kindness, she, along with the Yellow Tulip Project, implemented a kindness program, project for after-school for her students, and I think that was really successful. At Cold Spring and Federal Furnace, they offered the Balance for Kids Yoga Program, which incorporates some family dynamic as well as a craft for the kids, and then the yoga, and they look at, you know, kids who are more high-needs, who will benefit from this, so this is not the first year it was in the district, we started implementing it prior to COVID, and then, you know, obviously, took a little hiatus after that, but it's back and up and running again, so it's a great program. So one thing I just want to mention a little bit about legislation, obviously hugely impacts schools in many ways, we have lots of laws that increase the responsibilities of schools around a lot of different issues, this lot, this particular bill was just sponsored for the first time by our new state senator, Fernandez, and so it's something, this is actually the fifth session of this bill, we were behind it with the Mass School Nurse Organization in looking at municipal Medicaid billing across school districts, that money does go to the town directly that we bring in, from all of our direct service and administrative cost billing, and if those funds could come back to us directly, I know it's, you know, it's a balancing of monies, but the district did send a letter to the last session, it actually, the bill went right to the very end, and we were really hoping it would pass. For some reason, regionalized school districts get all of their money back, and regular LEAs like us do not, so this bill is back in session right now, I believe it's in healthcare finance, and so, you know, keeping fingers crossed, I feel like it's really important that we do our part here in the district to, to do the billing piece, and again, this talks a little bit more, a lot about equitable care, making sure that all kids receives, receive services. There is also a brand-new health equity bill, actually, not brand-new, I think this is the second session in Act Advancing Health Equity, and looking at, actually, you know, when I look at some of the facets of the new bill, they changed some of the language of the session, in schools, I really feel like our school district completely increases access to quality care for all kids, I believe we do enlist community connections and partnerships all the time here in Plymouth, and we do have a strengthened health equity leadership, I think it is total buy-in from the administration here, and we do have so many involved community partners to help us with this. So our District-Wide Professional Development Day, the nurses, along with the adjustment counselors in the district, were able to have two presentations, one is, was on concussions in the school-aged child, presented by our school physician, Dr. Saluti, and then we also had a supporting student mental health program that Pembroke Hospital came in and did for us. Every November, we try to do an evening program, and this particular year, we did one on substance abuse, we had a, a great panel of speakers, and we had a, and I know some, some of you might have, may have been there to see it, it was, actually, we had a great turnout, and, you know, was very happy, we're very happy with it. So the bulletin boards are something that the nurses try to have a health theme during certain months, during, you know, almost every month of the school year, and again, just looking at some of those, they do, there's certainly, like, a few of the nurses have the question of the day in their offices, and they talk about what the topic of their bulletin board is, some of them go into classrooms, and I think that's, you know, it's obviously great that they're able to educate kids. So we have our Healthy Headlines, it's been a longstanding newsletter for health services across the district, we were doing it every month last year and the year before, but this year, we decided to do it quarterly, and I think it's pretty successful, we're able to get the analytics on it, and we do have, and I'm sure, you know, obviously, there are families, families and staff in the district get this, and we have, you know, we can kind of watch how often it's being opened, how long it's being opened for, what topics they're looking at, whether they're on their phone or their computer, so, you know, really happy with the feedback, I've actually had parents call me and give me suggestions for topics. This year, one of our initiatives on our Wellness Committee was doing a Health and Wellness Quarterly for staff, which we started, and we've also had some really good success, and we've been able to feature some of our staff who have done a lot in the term, in the realm of health with their students, and great to feature them, and again, also have had some really positive feedback on this particular newsletter as well. So again, the Yellow Tulip Project was started by Judy Duarte, a nurse educator at PCIS, she has really role modeled and mentored this program with all of the nurses across the district, it's, we also have a lot of community involvement, yellow tulips are at the hospital, they're at the library, and we've had some, she's had some financial support, every school that does the Yellow Tulip Project has student ambassadors, and again, this basically represents smashing the stigma around mental health, and I think it sends a great message, we have a great Hope Walk, we had the third one this year at the Third Health Fair, which we had a great turnout for. Talking a little bit about attendance really quickly, this is the sixth year of a grant between the National Association of School Nurses, initially, the first three years was with the CDC, Luanne Nemus, our nurse at Manamet Elementary, was part of the first three-year program, and Kathy Riley, who's the Federal Furnace Nurse Educator, picked up after Luanne left off, and we were able to continue, this is the final and third year, Kathy did a really great, she did a great presentation at a statewide meeting on it, and also was involved with the Truancy Committee at Algonquin. We were able to do a NARQian training for teens, so we had quite a few kids from Plymouth Harbor Academy attend that, and thinking, you know, Maureen Coleman from the library was a great partner, they have a corner at the library that has a lot of really great information, and again, looking at, you know, the benefit of having community providers on a lot of topics that definitely impact families across the town. So the Public Health Excellence for Shared Services Grant Program, so my nurse Susan at Hedge Elementary, and Rhanna at Cold Spring are involved with that, with the Board of Health, and Dr. Terry Reed, and so I think it's moving a little slowly, but they're still involved nonetheless. We did at our Community Health Fair, we did a CPR, we tried, we do offer CPR for the community, and a lot of the little kids get really involved, and we had a really good turnout this year. We have our District Wellness Committee that meets quarterly, initially, the District Wellness Committee was started back in about 2007, I believe, all around the lunch, breakfast, actually, just the lunch program, all districts needed to have a wellness policy, and then the Wellness Committee is also, and the original focus was around obesity and overweight, but now we're really, I think, kind of moved beyond that into the whole child, discussing a number of topics, we have great community response, and so many members, it's been, it's been excellent, and actually, we, you know, different people come every month, as well as the regulars, and so, it's really, really well-attended and a great program. So again, just a little bit about gratitude, the nurses were, the kids were great on Nurses' Day, the nurses had a lot of positive feedback from them, this was a note from a student nurse to my nurse at Cold Spring for her time there, we partnered with Brockton Hospital School of Nursing this year, and quite a large number of nurses took on two students, so that was great. We do, again, you know, being very appreciative and valuing so many of the community connections that health services has, and I just want to quickly acknowledge, I mean, obviously, it was great to see a nurse win the Inspiration Award, Judy Duarte, who started the Yellow Tulip Project, won the Inspiration, was one of the winners of the Inspiration Award last fall, which was great, I do want to acknowledge Tammy Aguirre, she has been, she's been our case manager, and not only does she provide awesome, you know, resources to schools for kids, and you can actually, she's here, so you can ask her some questions, but again, working with our vision and hearing specialist to provide glasses for kids, for families who don't have the money, providers, you know, looking at clothing drives, again, and offering her a background in psychiatric nursing to support teams across the district. Sarah Britt was part of the period poverty piece, and has brought in organic menstrual products into the school, and she's one of, one of our health educators. And up top, on the top left is Lily Elwell, she's a CNA at Plymouth South Middle, and we were short a nurse there this year due to illness, and she has, she really picked up and did so much, some of our CNAs are also BLS instructors, and she, I really cannot commend her enough for the initiatives she's taken to support the kids in that building, it's been great. So we had our Nurses' Day celebration at the North Library, and the governor sent, I believe it was May 7th, was pronounced School Nurse Day again, and Senator Fernandez and Michelle Badger, as you can see, were there, and they gave the nurses their House and Senate recognitions, which was nice. So again, mentoring nursing students, again, is a form of leadership with the nurses, and I feel like, you know, everybody was a student at one point and knew it, what they were doing, so I think it's really important for us to share the knowledge, and, you know, and a lot about school nursing practice, because we're looking at recruiting people for the future, obviously. And then mentoring graduate nursing students, we actually have, we actually mentored a total of five graduate nursing students this year, one of them, on the right-hand side, gave all of the nurses this book, School is Cool, she worked on attendance, and actually went into some of the kindergarten and first grade classes and read this book, she was excellent, and, you know, again, mental health is also another focus for a lot of these nurses as well, coming in, that were mentored, that they're, you know, been mentored. We also have new health services staff, so new nurses are mentored, we've had two new health aides this year, and again, that's pretty time-intensive in busy health offices. We have hired, we had three new nurses this year as well, which are huge additions to our staff, all coming from acute care, who had been substitutes, so we, our subpool dropped a little bit, that was okay, it was worth it. Health aides, we can't really do our job without them, I mean, they offer so much support to the health offices, it's really a, a great model that we have here in Plymouth. And our substitute nurses, very thankful and grateful to them, and I, I just wanted to mention that Ann Powers is retiring permanently, she told us, yeah, I said, I don't know, we'll see, I don't know, sometimes I get a little desperate, and she, she agrees, but I think she's turning 70, so she said her time is, her time is getting more valuable. I'm gonna, again, thanking Tammy for all that she does for all of our nurses across the district, we really appreciate her so much, I think she was, she attended so many field trips, which was so helpful, so thank you, Tammy. And just follow us on social media, and again, you know, looking from the beginnings to the goodbyes, I think it's just really important to, to look at that, and then, you know, the famous quote from Jocelyn Elders about, "You can educate a child who isn't healthy, and you cannot keep a child healthy who isn't educated." Wishing Luanne Nemus from Manamet good luck, she's retiring after 10 years of being in the district, and we will definitely miss her, she'll be a hard act to follow, we did just hire a new nurse educator for that building, her name is Michaela Fahy, and I think she's going to be a great replacement. And again, thanking the superintendent, they, I know, they pulled you in, they pulled him in for CPR, Kathy said she wasn't going to let you walk by the table, so, and I think that, you know, without knowing other districts, I have to say, like, we are so fortunate here in Plymouth to have administrative support on all levels, even when I go into Adam's office, he's nice to me.
Because you're only coming for more money, Karen.
No, it's, well, that's why I'm there usually, but-
And he's never nice to anyone, no.
But Stacy's been great, I mean, everybody's been really great and supportive, and it's really, and that's not the case in so many school districts, but here, it is about the kids, and so I feel like, you know, everybody has their priorities, so, that's all, thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
Right, we have Ms. Jackson.
I have two questions and a comment, my comment is, I went to your substance abuse evening, and I thought it was fantastic, and I feel like if anybody has an opportunity to attend something that you put together at night, it was well worth the time.
Great, thank you.
And the speakers were just, I mean, they really all blew me away, and was, I consider myself to be fairly well-educated in the area, I still learned a lot from just listening to other people's lived experiences.
Right, thank you.
As far as questions, I had two questions, one is, you were speaking about concussions and about the concerns around that, is that something we track, or is that something that we leave to the pediatrician to track for, like, high school sports and-
Well, you know, concussions are tough, I think, I think they're recognized a lot more than they were 15-plus years ago, and I think that I, you know, we're more astute in terms of watching kids on the field, I think families are more aware, it's not just a ding, he'll be fine, so I think that, you know, and, and the nurses do follow up frequently with the kids, I know at the elementary level, you can ask my elementary nurses, but I believe that they, the families will report it, oh, you have an incident in school, so it's like, you know, you look at the report of the injury, and then you look at the symptoms, it may not be immediate, but by the next day, usually, you may start to see some changes or some issues with headaches, or integrate or retrograde amnesia, it doesn't necessarily, we at South Elementary, we had a brain bleed last year that was very serious, so fortunately, my nurse did a thorough neuro-examine, realized it was a little bit more than just a concussion, but they are, they're, they're just really important to manage, and I think that the teachers are overall great in terms of being understanding and reasonable, it's just tough when you have some of those concussions, that they just, they're just not better in a week or two.
Yeah.
So it, it makes it hard for some kids, especially kids in AP classes that maybe can't continue on within them if they're still getting symptomatic, some kids do great academically, and then they just, every time they exert themselves, they get their heart rate up, they seem to get, you know, symptomatic again, other kids, it's just the opposite, they can tolerate the physical activity, but they go into a computer class, or they do a math class, or foreign language, those tend to be the classes that the kids have the tougher time with, and again, you know, depending upon the area of the brain that's injured with the concussion, that usually dictates to the symptoms, and again, because it happens at the cellular level, the neuron, there's no change on a CT or MRI, so, it's kind of, you know, tough.
And then you talked about Medicaid funding, is there any discussion about how maybe changing legislation at the federal level might impact what happens with us as like a, like, healthcare funding and what we receive, and how that might affect our programming?
There has been some talk through different statewide agencies, like the Mass Public Health Association, Healthcare for All, the Children's Mental Health Campaign, that are, you know, giving information, right now, nothing, I believe, I know the state met- Right now, nothing, I believe, I know the state met, where, where we have a good relationship with the state Medicaid office. There's nothing, nothing that I have heard, I don't know, I, they were presenting, I don't know if they were presenting to the Mass Association of Business Officials or the state Medicaid office people and somebody from UMass. So I, I think right now, everything is kind of status quo. But again, it's, you know, it's important that all kids get screenings. And I think one of the things with health equity is not all kids have primary care. And we did talk last year about convenient MD, having a school nurse partnership. Because sometimes you just, practices don't want people that are on Mass Health, or they just can't fit them in, even kids with insurance. I mean, we get plenty of absence notes that, without kids being seen, I mean, it's problematic. I think since COVID, we, we always met one-on-one with every practice. And it's really difficult to get in and have that relationship and rapport that we had had before. I don't know why they suddenly have become so much busier, but they just, they have. And I think our attendance officer has a good relationship with one of the bigger practices in town, but it's still really difficult.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I just wanted to mention too, that I, I'm not sure if you were aware, we did have an administration of Narcan and some other life-saving activities that went on at Hedge. And my nurse Susan is here from Hedge, they were having fail day, and there was, a community person had dropped right outside the school area. So I think just having, you know, we are so equipped to handle emergencies, I think it's, you know, that just, and obviously having a nurse there too. It just speaks to how well-prepared we are in Plymouth, so.
It speaks to the importance of, like, the decision to put the nalox boxes in, even though it was not always favorable in the community, just having that education and the support and the resources available to.
Right.
If something like that happens, you know, it would have been otherwise a tragedy.
That was actually my second call for Narcan this year.
Wow.
So how many of my emergencies work in Narcan for community members?
And that's interesting, that's why we put AEDs in schools to start back in the early 2000s, was because schools are community buildings. So, I think, and they're expensive to maintain. I mean, they're, it's, you know, it's something that you have to be always on top of. But to have that here and available, we did use our AED at Indianbrook a few years back and did save a life, so that was great.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Ms. Bryant?
Oh, just a clarifying question, for concussion, I believe you stated that it's reported back to the state for any secondary in high school? Is there a reason why it's not done at the elementary level?
Mm-hmm, and the reason is, is because the, the state law is specific around school athletics. And so if you had, if we did not have a formal athletic program at our middle schools, we wouldn't be. I mean, and I think it's important really for elementary as well, because those kids, the diagnosis isn't as easy with them. And, and they all, they're impacted, they take longer to get better.
Right.
And they don't really understand to be able to verbalize how they're feeling and if they're getting better. And it's tough, because they're back, you know, out at recess and back in PE, so it's important that they get, you know, the rest and management as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Smartzalas, you're not done yet.
She's like, I'm out of here.
So I, I have two sisters who are nurses, so if I don't ask a question, I can't return home. But I want, I, I got a statement first, is that we're, by 2030, we're going to need 3 million more nurses. I, I believe that school-based nurses are the pathway to a better healthcare system. We have a broken healthcare system with long wait times, try to get an appointment, pay high premiums. But I think with the work that you folks are doing now in population health and chronic condition care, and then bridging the gap to education, we have a, a fighting chance, I think, to look at our K-12 population and really have that advocacy before kids develop conditions, right? And I, and I think, you know, we're old in the north, the north part of the globe. Like, we have an aging population that's going to require certain care. But if we don't at some time get back to moving, sleeping, eating, and a wellness agenda, we're going to keep tracking towards inevitable aspects of breaking a healthcare system. So I, I think, you know, do you guys embrace any type of telehealth or virtual care internally? Is there a move towards that?
That is definitely gaining popularity in rural areas where there is no access to care. We did have a really great relationship with Harbor Health. I know Tammy, as our case manager, was very involved with them. And some of our schools, they were seeing some of our, a lot of our new ALL families. And then their nursing changed, whoever was in charge of nursing there left. And so it's been not as easy. But I will say, just to speak to the chronic condition piece, that all of my nurses that are here tonight have had brand-new diabetics, very young age, come in, and you know, 10, 15 years ago, those kids would be in the hospital for a week, having, you know, very intense family education for, and for themselves. And now, the next day, they're in school. So, and then school nurses really managing the care with the families. And, you know, the technology is great, we have so much more sophisticated technology, but not all the kids use it. And it varies, you know, from when you're dealing with a young kindergarten first grader to up to a senior in high school who's maybe sick of being diabetic. So you're dealing with the whole myriad of issues around that. But I think too, looking at, you know, again, looking at our BMIs, are they super accurate? Maybe not 100%, but looking at, you know, getting kids to learn about health promotion and the importance of good nutrition. We have a nutritionist in the district now, we have access to the hospital nutrition, nutritionist. Masha Richards is great, coming to our wellness meetings. And looking at, you know, a lot of our PE staff, and our new nurse that we just hired, also majored and has another degree in exercise. So I mean, I think it's important that if we can start instilling these values in kids early on, it's going to be really important. But yeah, you're right, I mean, healthcare today is a lot different than it was three, four years ago. And, I mean, I know the nurses can speak to it, you just can't get an appointment many times at your physician's. And we, and I didn't mention this either in terms of health equity, but our oral health care, we do have a smiles program, which now includes a dentist. And we did see a little shy of 400 students this year in our, in that program, which I think is great, because I really wonder if how many of those kids would have had dental care without that. And we also track health insurance. And under, probably under 3% of our students are not insured. It's tough, because there are a lot of families that do not report anything, and we can't get them to answer. So, you know, and the nurses do send out and have a lot of communication around that. But I think, again, you know, our case manager and our nurses have linked families with Mass Health. And I think that's just really important, that kids have access to care, because, I mean, that's huge. I mean, they have access to care at school here, we're lucky for that. But if they develop any type of issue and need a special, you know, a specialist, which, with all of our kids with chronic medical needs, that can happen at any time, it's important that they're connected.
I think, I think it's great, and you guys are vital parts of a healthcare team. And I think health systems that are embracing that now. And I think you need more access to data, I know it's HIPAA compliant, and, you know, getting into Epic to find someone's records is a challenge sometimes. But I, I, I think we have to kind of smash that and almost create that synergy between health systems and what's going on with school-based nursing.
And they did that for a while in Framingham.
Yeah.
And Fitchburg, they had their health sys, health software aligned with different, it wasn't with Epic, it was a different system with one of their major hospital systems. And that was great in many respects, but, you know, not, parents don't always want to share permission.
Right, yeah.
And that makes it tough to.
There's got to be guidelines, you're right.
Yeah, but, yeah, it's great. And Delaware, I know they do that all, all the time, but we'll get there, I suppose, maybe, eventually.
Twenty-five years from now, you'll be doing augmented reality and.
Yeah, I'll probably, I don't know where I'll be in 25 years, but somebody will be here from here, I guess, anyway. But thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. All right, we are on to superintendent's report, Dr. Campbell.
Thank you very much, a few things, promise to be as expedient as possible. First, we had a safety committee meeting last week, and I wanted to publicly talk about one thing that brought, came up, and that was the danger of e-bikes. So the Plymouth Police shared that they're having problems and concerns around increased use of electric bikes in towns. And these are common with young children. The minimum age for operating an e-bike in Massachusetts is 16, while the minimum age to operate, and, excuse me, to operate independently is 16. But with permission, you could have riders as young as 14, with supervision. They're becoming a danger in the roadway to pedestrian safety on pathways, walking pathways in town. There are plans by the Plymouth Police to put out a PSA, which we will share publicly as well, to address these concerns over the summer, to try to educate our families. Some of the students are also taking the regulator off of, and they can go upwards of 50 miles an hour, very dangerous. So, really concerned, so just want to put that out there publicly. And again, we'll share that PSA when the Plymouth Police publicize that and share it with us. On June 3rd, I had the opportunity to speak to support two transportation bills that Ms. Badger was promoting, as well as the written testimony from Mrs. Jackson. Mr. Pento also joined me at the State House, Dr. Boizdell, and Mr. Canty also testified remotely. Anecdotally, very positive from the chair of the committee. And I think either bill would be a positive outcome for Plymouth and many communities in the Commonwealth, so look forward to that. Also, we'll be testifying tomorrow for a safe firearms storage bill, which I know that Mr. Pizzano will be as well. And I think that you wrote something as well.
I wrote something, yeah.
Yes, so, really excited, and very, just very appreciative of our representatives bringing us into the conversations to help promote some really important bills. I'm going to ask if we can pull up the Summer Happenings. So every year, we do a Summer Happenings, this went out in my letter to families, but just to point out where people can find it. So if you click on, if you can go to the main page first, so I can show people how to get there, just click on, yep, thank you. On the bottom, I believe, there's the button, you see the summer, the little, the little sun.
Sun.
The little sun. And that will take you right to the Summer Happenings, this is rich with information. So if you scroll, just Summer Break, Care Solace, we've talked about that, just getting help when you need it, we're not, we're not in session, really important. Our summer lunches, summer reading, some of the AP honors work, summer math, our science programs, Blake Planterium, a whole host of things, Credit Recovery Program. And those are all dropdown menus, and there's lots of resources and opportunities. I just want to highlight that for the community, didn't want to spend a lot of time on it, but please look at that, there's a lot of information there. And to wish everyone a happy and safe summer. And the, the last thing that I want to do is just take a moment to address an issue that I know has been of deep concern, which we've communicated out recently, but we haven't had a public meeting since, and that is the recent arrest of our Director of Food Services, Mr. Patrick Van Cot, on charges related to alleged theft of school equipment and food supplies. So just want to begin by reaffirming the community what I've already shared in my public and written communications. As soon as concerns about Mr. Van Cot's conduct were brought to our attention, the school department acted swiftly. We did initiate an internal review. And with the extent of the, when those discrepancies became clear enough for us, we immediately refer the matter to the Plymouth Police Department. And since that time, we've been fully cooperating with law enforcement, they've been tremendous. And we continue to do so forth as the investigation proceeds. We've also taken appropriate action, personnel action, and Mr. Van Cot is no longer permitted in school property. I think it's important for the public to know, to emphasize that this remains an active investigation. So while we understand that members of the public may have questions, and, and we share many questions ourselves, we must also respect the process and avoid jumping to conclusions based on incomplete or inaccurate information. We also want to reassure our families that at no point have our cafeterias been short of any food for students. Our school meals have continued without disruption. Our food service staff, tremendous staff have remained committed to serving our children with care and professionalism. This situation is deeply troubling, and we take it very seriously. We're working internally and with our partners externally to identify where systems may have failed, and more importantly, what safeguards need to be put in place moving forward. And we're committed to implementing appropriate, any appropriate corrective actions and enhancing any accountability measures across all of our operations. But I just want to extend my sincere appreciation for the staff members who did come forward to raise concerns, you know. We recognize that, you know, reporting as supervisor is an extraordinary, difficult, and stressful situation, and it takes courage to speak up, especially in a situation that can carry personal and professional risk for an individual. So their action, we believe, reflects a deep commitment to their integrity of our schools. And because of their courage and sense of responsibility, we were able to act swiftly and appropriately. And, and they all have our deepest respect and gratitude. So as we move through this promise, excuse me, as, as we move through this process, I promise to keep our school, community, and community at large informed. You know, while I can't answer any questions tonight beyond what I'm stating here, or even in the coming weeks, but I want everyone to know that we are committed to full transparency and restoring trust. And we will continue to communicate information in our process as we move forward. And just, again, thank people for holding us to standards and the continued support of our community so that we can have our students and staff and community have an environment that they deserve, so just wanted to end with that.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Do we have any questions, Dr. Campbell? All right, we'll move on to committee member reports. Do we have any general updates from any members? All right, if not, we'll move on to, Mr. Morgan, anything from Mass Planning Committee?
I know updates.
All right, and then Plymouth Building Committee?
Yes, I will also be brief, I do have some information. We had an update on the homeless shelter being constructed in the industrial park. And construction's ongoing, they had some change orders, so their costs are going up. A lot of the money that, for this project is from the CPC, and then they have grants and whatnot. But they ran into some code issues, so we're, Building, Building Committee is watching that closely. Fire departments, Station 2 to warranty work is being done. Station 5, there's another issue still being addressed. And then for the police station HVAC system, there's three finalists for the owner's project manager role, and that'll be voted on soon. Lastly, on Memorial Hall, they're having some water infiltration through the brick. One of the walls are starting to bow. So they're looking to stabilize that situation on top of looking at the plans for improving and modernizing the, the hall. But they have some immediate structural issues they need to address. So the feasibility study's in, it's going to be broken down, presented to the Building Committee at a future meeting. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. All right, next up, we have personnel reports, who's reading those?
This evening, we have three certificate appointments to present, one classified appointment and one resignation.
All right, thank you for that. Do we have any unfinished business any members would like to resurrect? No, any new, new business for a future discussion? All right, if not, we will move on to consent agenda, so we just have some homeschooling plans, accounts bail warrant, and a bunch of equipment disposal records, so. Anything need to be pulled? Have a motion?
I'll make a motion and approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, ten seconds. All right, Mr. Saywood, seconds. All right, as expected, that passes unanimously. And we are ready to wrap. I'll say this is our last in-person meeting of the 2024, 2025 school year. So thank you, everybody, for all your hard work over the past year or so. And we'll see you all virtually next, next month, so thank you. I'll call the meeting end at 9:30, 6:00 PM.
Thank you.